Pleased to bring the board an update on our high school redesign efforts. And I think the theme the team has been using about this journey and road trip is so appropriate as we continue the journey and continue to bring this board a number of updates about that the work that's happening related to this journey. And so a big thanks and kudos to Dr. Farrell and Mr. Batton for their continued work, as well as the teams behind the scenes, a number of other folks who are heavily involved in these efforts. And so excited to bring you our next update related to this ongoing journey. Dr. Farrell.
Thank you. Good afternoon Chairman Cooper, members of the board and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Thomas Farrell, Director of High School Education, and I'm joined by Mac Batton, Director of Workforce and Career Development, Eric Rhodes, Science Specialist, and Dan Stukes, Workforce and Career Development Specialist. We are here today to update you on the journey of high school redesign and HCPS. During our last presentation, we asked that you think about high school redesign as a road trip. We are about to embark on a journey, and today we are revisiting our journey to share an update on the routes toward equitable, rigorous opportunities that empower all students. The focus today is around the work in progress to increase the diversity of enrollment in advanced course programming and expand the advanced pathways available to students that allow them to connect their interests and passions. When driving, the physical capacity of the roadways impact traffic congestion, and the lack of capacity can lead to bottlenecks and traffic jams. The same is true for the education highway. If we are not removing barriers and expanding opportunity, many of our students will continue to experience barriers to advanced course experiences. Making operational improvements like adding lanes and exits can increase roadway capacity and allow for more efficient approaches to alleviate traffic. That is the work we are sharing with you today around high school redesign, providing more entrance ramps to specialized learning experiences by proposing two new additional specialty centers focused on relevant career pathways in proximity to community businesses and community partners, expanding lanes of access by developing the Academy at Virginia Randolph as an additional ACE Center while also expanding the ACE Centers at Hermitage and Highland Springs. And last but not least, we're starting roadwork to resurface our current specialty center programming and application process to improve our well-traveled roadways. Now, we want to provide more of the specifics around each of these projects. Starting with the proposed additional specialty centers with an anticipated opening in the fall of 2022, the Verona Center for Environmental Science and Sustainability offers a unique opportunity for students to expand their understanding of environmental stewardship and sustainable energy through self, through student-centered learning, community partnerships, and foundational academic knowledge and practices that will prepare students to be life-ready while providing a learning environment that is unparalleled in other high schools. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, employment of environmental scientists and specialists is projected to grow eight percent from 2019 to 2029, much faster than the average for all occupations. Heightened public interest in the hazards facing the environment, as well as increasing demands placed on environment by population growth, are expected to spur demand for environmental scientists and specialists. Students who participate in the Center for Environmental Science and Sustainability will learn about sustainable best practices while having experiences that will allow them to demonstrate the six Cs of the Henrico learner profile and experience deeper learning through student-centered research, community-supported service learning, and internships anytime, anywhere by utilizing the vast majestic land such as the deep bottom area to conduct research through authentic and connected experiences that are relative to their lives and broader community. The goal of the Verona Center for Environmental Science and Sustainability is to empower students in the program to broaden their understanding of environmental and sustainability through utilizing the school and broader community as a context for learning about environmental science and sustainability, integrating interdisciplinary instruction, incorporating experiential learning that fosters the collaborative, creative, and critical thinking skills, implementing environmental service learning projects and internships, and earning college credits and industry-recognized credentials. This program prepares students for a range of post-secondary opportunities and provides avenues for students to investigate career-related to the environment and sustainability. Students with the, students acquire the critical thinking skills and practices necessary to be successful in pathways after high school to become future scientists, politicians, and business leaders within our local and broader community. So why this center at Verona High School? Location is everything. There are many unique opportunities for students to focus their environmental and sustainability studies in the Verona area, ranging from environmental studies to sustainable practices. Verona High School's location allows for place-based experiential learning opportunities in places such as the James River, recreational spaces including Dory and Deep Bottom Parks, the Capital Trail, Roundabout Creek, acres of local farm and other agricultural land, and the Henrico Water Reclamation Facility. This new specialty center will take student engagement to a different level by allowing for stronger connections to the educational needs of each student, challenging them with rigorous, meaningful, and connected courses. We believe this approach to teaching and learning provides our students with the skills and attributes outlined in the Henrico learner profile: creative thinker, critical thinker, collaborator, communicator, global citizen, and quality character. This educational approach will open doors and provide access to all students. Verona High School will work with central office staff and business and community partners to create own ramps for students who have an interest in this center. Each student's path will be built around the goals the students establish in partnership with Verona High School and their families. The proposed Center for Environmental Science and Sustainability at Verona High School would offer several unique courses. Courses will be developed to take advantage of the natural resources of the Verona community that we have previously discussed. Some of the courses that will be offered to students in the proposed center are Unmanned Aerial Systems, Geospatial Technology, and Energy Demand Sustainability and Efficiency. You will notice that dual enrollment opportunities are being offered through these and other courses. Many of these opportunities may lead to an associate's degree. In shaping this specialty center, it is important to have received input from local businesses and community groups. Henrico is fortunate to have a multitude of well-established partnerships with many businesses and community partners. Although our partners could not be with us this afternoon, I would still like to recognize them for their support. Henrico County Information Technology, Henrico County Energy Management, Virginia Cooperative Extension, which includes Virginia Tech and Virginia State University, Virginia Commonwealth University Integrated Life Science and Engineering, Henrico Recreation and Parks, Henricopolis Soil and Water Conservation District, James River Association, the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources, and Virginia Dominion Energy, and also National Energy Education Department. I would also like to acknowledge the Executive Director for the Capital Region Land Conservancy, Parker Agolasto, for use of the Deep Bottom Property. We appreciate the partnership, and we are excited about the long-term efforts to support our students' learning. Our initial kickoff meeting to gather input and generate ideas from our partners has already led to multiple ways in which meaningful work-based learning experiences can be afforded to students in the proposed Center for Environmental Science and Sustainability. For example, students will be able to intern with Henrico Reckon Parks, work in the Renewable Energy Lab, and experience drone and remote surveying with Dominion, and learn about natural resource management through the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. In addition, students may earn certifications and other credentials based on the pathway they decide to take. By participating in the Environmental Science and Sustainability Center, students will have access to multiple in-demand career pathways, some of which are highlighted on this slide, including environmental scientist, ecotourism guide, social and political advocacy, and geographical information systems technician. Before I transition into the proposed additional center at Hermitage High School, because we have a pretty lengthy presentation, I will pause to answer specific questions about the proposed Center for Verona High School.
Thank you so much, Dr. Farrell. We're going to begin with Ms. Consello if you mind.
I don't have any questions or statements at this time. I'm going to save all my comments for one time because they kind of, they flow, other than I'm so excited about our two new centers that we're adding. I will say that, and then I'll just save all mine.
Well, to that point, Dr. Farrell, thank you for that generous offer. What is the pleasure of the board? Do you want him to keep going?
Keep going.
Okay, so Dr. Farrell, if you could, just keep pushing. Now, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to stop you in four minutes because we have a public hearing.
Is it five, sir?
Is it?
It's approximately a five. So why don't we get through the allies?
Okay.
We said it wouldn't be before five. So why don't we do the allied health section and then we'll pop?
After ally, that's fine. Yeah, five is, okay. Let's, let's proceed, Doc. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay, and now we will update you on the proposed additional center for Hermitage High School with an anticipated opening in the fall of 2022. The US Bureau of Labor Statistics states that employment in healthcare occupations is projected to grow fifteen percent from 2019 to 2029, much faster than the average for all occupations, adding about 2.4 million jobs. Healthcare occupations are projected to add more jobs than any other occupational groups. This projected growth is mainly due to an aging population leading to greater demand for healthcare services. An allied health and human services specialty center would be a career pathway for students who are interested in allied health services. Students would be immersed in courses related to the allied health field while earning an advanced studies high school diploma and college credits. This specialty center is designed to progress students from basic foundations to professional certification and licensure. Students interested in a college pathway upon graduation would have the opportunity to complete a health science career study certificate prior to graduation. Many may choose to go directly into the workforce and will leave with a license or certification to have gainful employment, while others continue on the educational pathway at the community college or four-year university. So why this center at Hermitage High School? Location, location, location. As we work to create and sustain synergy with our school communities, a specialty center focused on the allied health field is a great fit for Hermitage, given the close proximity to the Hermitage ACE Center and surrounding medical facilities. Many of our potential business and community partners in the health industry are within a 10-mile or less radius. This short distance allows for ease of access and accessibility for our students and partners. In addition to the many partnerships we're developing, the demand and availability of jobs in the allied health field makes this specialty center a necessity for our students and our county. The proposed Center for Allied Health and Human Services at Hermitage High School would offer several unique courses. The courses will be designed to prepare students for in-demand careers, and the interdisciplinary learning experiences are designed to enhance student success in a healthcare pathway. Some of the courses that will be offered to students in this proposed center are Dynamics of Healthcare, Anatomy and Physiology, and Medical Laboratory Technician. You will notice that dual enrollment opportunities are being offered through these and other courses. Many of these opportunities may lead to an associate's degree. In shaping the specialty center, it is important to have received input from local businesses and community groups. As I stated, Henrico County is fortunate to have a multitude of well-established relationships with many businesses and community partners who are excited about this opportunity to further support our students. Although our business partners could not be with us this afternoon, I would still like to recognize them for their support. Reynolds Community College, Bond Secures, Param Healthcare and Rehabilitation Center, Virginia Commonwealth University, HCA Hospital, CVS, Walgreens, Locke A. Taylor Veterinary Hospital, Tuckahoe Orthopedics, Children's Hospital of Richmond, and Henrico Fire. HCPS health and medical programs currently have over 20 affiliation agreements that allow our students to complete direct patient care clinical hours. Each course has a specific number of direct patient care hours that are required to meet the Virginia Department of Health Professionals requirements to earn licensure or certification. Examples of these experiences include clinical hours for our nurse aide and practical nursing students, where our students are assigned patients and work directly under the supervision of an instructor, ride-alongs for our EMT students, work and working with our athletic trainers for sports medicine and practical hours inside pharmacy and pharmacy, for pharmacy tech students. These experiences are completed in acute care, long-term care, medical facilities, and home health. The healthcare partners are willing to expand these opportunities for our students and are excited that HCPS is leading the way in meeting their growing demands for qualified By participating in the Allied Health and Human Services Center, students will have access to multiple in-demand career pathways, some of which are highlighted on this slide, including registered nurses, forensic science technician, and respiratory therapists. Some of the industry certifications that students can earn while in high school include personal trainer, phlebotomy certification, ENOKTI Small Animal and Technology certification. Future exit and entry ramps for students include Medical Laboratory Sciences, a Health Sciences BS, and Veterinary of Science degree. Okay, at this time, I'm, I've completed the presentation for the Allied Health Services Proposed Specialty Center. Hopefully I was within the time. Reverend Cooper?
Yes, sir, Dr. Farrell. I think that you came in right on time.
Thank you, sir.
To Ms. Shea's point and Ms. Consello's seconding her, we said around five-ish we would have our public forum, and we have gone past five o'clock, and so we do have a few persons that have signed up. The next item on the agenda is the public forum. This is the time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance. Speakers will be given two minutes to address the school board. We will follow the sign-up list, and the board will not hear from speakers who have not signed up in advance. Those who have signed up to speak may not relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your names to my left, clearly state your name and neighborhood or school affiliation. To assist you in tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system on the platform of the stage. Speakers will have a two-minute time limit. The light will be green as you begin your remarks. The yellow light means you have one minute remaining, and we ask that you please stop speaking when the light turns red. The school board is here today to hear from you, the community. Speakers should speak directly to the board. We will not be responding to speakers, and as always, we appreciate your attendance here this afternoon, as always, providing your input. The first speaker for this evening is Mr. Douglas Posey. Is Mr. Posey here? Mr. Posey, are you here? The next speaker is Ms. Emily Van Fossen. Ms. Van Fossen, are you here? Emily Van Fossen. The last speaker is Mr. Everton Joseph. Mr. Joseph, are you here? Dr. Farrell, you may continue. Did he leave? Oh, there he is. I didn't know if I ran him off.
No, sir. Good evening, everyone, or afternoon. We're still close, anyway. Our next step along the journey to expand access and opportunity is to begin the resurfacing of all our existing specialty centers. We have begun the process of resurfacing the current centers while continuing to build the new ones. We believe that a specialty center should be a place where a student can become fully immersed in a curriculum that connects with their interests, and most importantly, their passions. This ongoing project will require time to inform and support students to align their passions and their interests with their academic and career planning, and adjust the curriculum to provide multiple pathways and attract maximum participation. For example, at the Communication Center, working with business partners from across the country, as well as in our own backyard, we have begun to widen those pathways. These new pathways will reflect more of the current needs in the communication fields, but also capitalize on the existing curriculum. Similar to resurfacing projects are ongoing at all centers, and we are working to ensure the new pathways and opportunities will be available for our students as to begin the process of applying this fall, fall of 2021, for admission for the 2022 school year. This includes refreshing the specialty center admissions process to ensure more clarity and transparency. Continuous improvement is the goal for all specialty centers. This will require routine maintenance to ensure all pathways are future-revvalent, and connected to industry trends. While this has happened in isolation in the past, we now understand the vision for Henrico County is more than students just graduating college and career-ready. It's about being, preparing students to be prepared, to be life-ready. This means that students graduate with a plan for success. To that end, the Director of High School Education and the Director of Workforce and Career Development have maintained the current and future pathways as a team since both play key roles to ensure a smooth transition to post-secondary opportunities. The goals for the ACE Center expansions are very straightforward, actually, and I'm very excited to talk about these. Expanding programming at the current ACE Centers will provide additional opportunities for our students to pursue work-based learning experiences that will prepare them for careers and post-secondary education. These experiences will lead students to having access to in-demand, high-wage opportunities. We will be able to serve students that we have not been able to serve in the past. With the funding for the renovation, which we are so excited about, and the expansion, this will allow us to meet the needs of the students that have been seeking opportunities in our ACE Centers, but due to space constraints, were not able to enroll. We will be adding approximately 1,000 seats once the renovations, additions, and the incorporation of our new ACE at Virginia Randolph is complete. This will also allow us to capitalize on the synergies between location, business partners, job opportunities, and similar programs. Understanding that many different pathway, that there are many different pathways to careers, it's important that we provide our students with alternative pathways to help them explore and excel in a career cluster that they have an interest in. With the expansion of Hermitage ACE, we will be able to add multiple health and medical options that will not only provide additional opportunities for ACE Center students, but also connect with our newly proposed Allied Health and Human Services Specialty Center. Working in partnership with Reynolds Community College, St. Mary's, HCA, and other health and medical care providers, we will be able to offer programs in areas such as physical therapy, surgical tech, respiratory therapy, and even have a senior daycare. At Highland Springs ACE, we will be able to build on the synergy of our existing programs and capitalize on the unique opportunities such as our house building program to provide work-based learning opportunities that go far beyond the traditional classroom. We will be adding unique programs such as cybersecurity, coding, that complement popular specialty center programs such as the Center for Information Technology. Just as the High Tech Academy has complemented the Engineering Center in the past, providing students with an alternative to the same career pathway, these programs will focus on similar career clusters, providing our students with additional opportunities to reach their career goals. We're excited to be creating the new and enhanced opportunities by bringing the ACE at Virginia Randolph onboard. This center will continue to serve AVR, but also provide unique opportunities countywide. The synergy of these programs to the community and other ACE Centers and the potential of employment opportunities will be greatly enhanced. We are also exploring ways to add unique and different opportunities to other centers. For example, adding a new opportunity for students who may be enrolled in the Center for Arts by providing them with a pathway to learn about lighting and sound. Most recently, at graduations, I had the opportunity to talk with David Diamond from Productive AV. I will be meeting with him next week to begin working on the connection for these new opportunities for our students in the Center for the Arts that may want a pathway that is a non-performing It's easy to plan a road trip, but to be, to ensure success and reach our destination and expand opportunities, it is necessary that we prioritize our expenses along the way. We're so excited about the financial commitment that has already been made to the ACE Centers. We also know that Virginia Randolph is the next stretch of roadway, and we will be focusing on it as we continue on our journey. Planning for this trip is key. We will utilize our business partners to help provide the needed directions to ensure our students reach their destinations prepared. The journey will require insight into the conditions ahead and pre-planning for all opportunities the road ahead may hold. I want to take the, this opportunity to thank our Board of Supervisors, our school board, Dr. Cashwell, the county manager, for their support and advocacy for making the opportunity to expand our ACE Centers possible. While we continue to work to be a leader in CTE in the region, this will allow us to serve students in ways that have not in the past been possible. We are working to ensure that the renovations and expansions will be completed, and I'm going to say this out loud so it becomes official, fall of 2023. We want to open these doors. This will ensure that students in HCPS wishing to participate in these opportunities have the chance to excel. The new ACE Center at Virginia Randolph is currently part of the proposed CIP for 2023. The timing of this fits perfectly with the renovations and expansions of our current ACE Centers and will allow us to plan a countywide approach to developing all of the future CTE programming. As we begin the planning process for the proposed new specialty centers, we have some unique opportunities and want to ensure that these are included in our planning process as we begin the budget process for 2223. Some of the considerations that need to be included will be Some of the considerations that need to be included will be unique opportunities through paid experiences for teachers in the summer to participate in internships in the field, expose and meaningful connections for our teachers in the centers to the industry expectations and trainer, training. Resources and equipment that's needed to meet the needs of their new curriculum focus. Resources that will support the promotion of literature and items to explain the mission and vision of the new centers. Funding for recruitment opportunities for needed staff and students. Funding for teachers in partnership with their business and industry partners to develop curriculum and, yes, dual enrollment opportunities. As we add the new specialty center and complete the renovations of the A-Center expansion, we need to consider the overall impact to enrollment of our comprehensive high schools. As we continue to review enrollment trends at specialty centers, we recognize that some centers have the opportunity and the capacity to serve more students. Then two new proposed centers will be projected to serve up to 100 students per grade level, allowing them to serve a total of 400 additional students at both Hermitage and Verona. Understand that some of these students attending these centers will be zoned, Hermitage and Verona. The overall impact to the school's projected enrollment will increase by 320 students. To establish these numbers, we made the assumption that each school will lose 80 students to the new centers when grades nine through 12 are established. As we increase the capacity of the A-Centers to meet the needs of our students that have already expressed a desire to attend and redesign how this opportunity would affect these students by allowing these students to attend the A-Center all day, every other day, we also will be able to adequately predict the number of seats that this would make available in each high school. For example, for the last three years, 382 students, on average, have applied for the A-Center at Holland Springs High School. This would mean that 191 students each day would attend the A-Center program and not be at Holland Springs High School. This would decrease the functional capacity by 191 seats. At this time, the HVA is included in these numbers. However, we do not have any trend data at this point to show how this will impact the long-term enrollment for each school. According to the projections on this slide, there will be space to expand specialty capacity at each of our high schools, with the exception of Deep Run and Glen Allen, which by our projections would be at 91.7% and 100.6% capacity, respectively. As we continue on our journey to redesign high schools in Henrico County, I would like to draw your attention to some of our upcoming stops. Refreshing the application process by the fall of 2021 for the specialty centers, April Craver, TLI Specialist, with the support of the Director of High School Education and the Director of Workforce and Career Development, will lead a committee of HCPS staff to refresh this current application process. The committee will utilize information from the Office of Civil Rights, feedback collected from HCPS Equity Diversity Advisory Committee, and Ford NGL. In recent focus groups, information collected by various HCPS stakeholders, including central office staff, Midland High School teachers, students, parents and guardians, school counselors, and specialty center directors. We will come back to the board for approval of, for curriculum, and with board approval, we will be looking to begin the curriculum writing process for the new centers. And I am excited to say the RFP for the A-Center is expected to, has been released, actually, I think, in June 2021, and as opposed to, the results are supposed to come back by July 15th. And while I was sitting here tonight, the review will be July 29th, and once again, with the completion date being fall of 2023. We also will define budget for all specialty centers and review based on visioning and needs assessment by the fall of 2021. Thank you for coming along on this journey this afternoon, and we look forward to this exciting adventures that are coming. And at this time, we will be happy to answer any questions.
Again, thank you both for the expansive presentation. We're excited to talk. Ms. Cancela.
And what a journey it's been. I appreciate that presentation so much. As you can see, the enthusiasm from the board, I'm certain we're so grateful to have two new centers coming onboard. And I do appreciate that the board is, I'm so happy to hear the RFP, because I was going to send thanks over to our government side for actually appropriating the funds this week, if I'm not mistaken. So really excited about that. And then I guess this goes to more future requests. Again, I want to see the timeline now that we have the RFP, and, because I want to know when design is, and I know we say it's going to be completed by X, but I'd really like to see a timeline when that becomes available. And then I think I'd like to start, Mr. Baiton. Most of my questions are probably going to be for you, though, Dr. Farrell, I really appreciate the pieces of the presentation you presented. Mr. Baiton, if you could just explain the difference, for those folks who may be watching or watch this back, the difference between CTE and A-Centers?
Actually, the A-Centers are part of CTE. When you look at the umbrella of CTE, it actually starts in the middle school with fair exposure programs through technology education, family consumer sciences, business, and then progresses on at the high school, where students have the option of JROTC, marketing, business, technology education. So it's an opportunity to explore careers, and when those students then decide, I really want to focus in on, let's say, a health and medical career, then the A-Centers are a place that they can go and get, once again, by definition of a specialty center, they can delve into something much deeper than they can at their home school to earn certifications, dual enrollment opportunities, and really start their career pathway. So the A-Center is basically a subset under the umbrella of CTE.
Right. And if I, if I could just, for a point of clarity, you just said that some of the CTE opportunities are available in our zoned schools, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted folks to, to really understand that this conversation is primarily about specialty centers, which we're calling ACE, right? I think we get so used to our vernacular that we don't consider those who may not understand exactly what we're talking about. So thank you for that. And now I'm just going to say, forgive me if I sound like a broken record. However, I'm really looking forward to the next presentation, and I think I said this exact same thing on April 22nd, 2021, which hopefully will include, I know that the teams work on access and opportunity plans and expanding capacity and the application process. I know y'all have done so much work, and I'm so grateful. And like we continue to say, there's more work to do, and I can't wait for that next presentation. But in the meantime, as the team works on the fall presentation for the board, I would like for you to, again, consider the application, as you consider the application process and programming and relevancy of all of our programs and capacity and access by increasing seats in certain programs, I'd like to ask the team to consider the demand that we've had for our specialty center programs where we have declined, I believe it's 1,300 students. So I want you to look at not only the demand for the centers, and typically it's been geographically related. So what tweaks can we make so that we're better serving our students? And because we do have that data, and then the volume of students previously denied, I think we could, one of our most popular programs, for example, is the Henrico Center for the Performing Arts Program. And I do believe we have capacity there. Like, this is just an example of what I'm talking about, is maybe we could add seats there. And I do know that all of our magisterials actually cover, she's snapping over here, that all of our magisterial districts do equally, I think, share the same amount of interest in, in that program, and that's not what I'm seeing when I look at other data for our other centers, if you understand what I'm saying. And then also, something that has come to my attention just by listening to parents talk about the application process is, and I brought this up at the April 22nd meeting, is so many of our students apply to the center, sometimes based on interest, a lot of times, we would hope, based on interest, but a lot of times it's based on the rigor and the points associated with that rigor that are only available in our specialty centers, right? So we have a lot, we have students applying to a lot of centers, perhaps five, six, I don't know how many centers, but I also know that if it's not interest-driven, I feel like students then get waitlisted and other students lose opportunity because students applied to too many centers that maybe weren't interest-driven. So I don't know what this looks like that I'm asking for, but I'm just concerned that some of our students are losing opportunity because of waitlists that other students get on at different centers. Does that make sense, Mr. Baiton?
Yes, ma'am. And I think what's, what we are working on and what we hope to accomplish through a series of things, we're actually creating almost like a one-page career pathway guide for students, because part of that waitlist, and when you limit the opportunities, students are just going to where they think they need to go. We need to do a better job, and part of our game plan is to have, starting at the elementary school level, and, you know, last year, the board added, or actually, I guess it was two years ago now, time flies when you're having fun, added two additional people in our staff to help bring that career training, not a job, but the career pathway exposure down to the elementary school level, so students can start to work through that funnel by the time they are applying for a specialty center. They know what they're applying for and the reason they're applying for it. For instance, if you're interested in engineering, you would think, okay, well, the Engineering Center is the place to go. But engineering can have multiple pathways, as we discussed today with the new center. If you're interested in agriculture, engineering, then that would be a better opportunity. Or the High Tech Academy is a better opportunity if you're interested in working in an industrial environment. Or if you're in medical engineering, it may be the Godwin Center or the new center that we're going to be putting at Hermitage. So we need to define the pathways better so parents and students have the opportunity to say, I like this, and I can use my talents here, and this is where my passion's at. And so hopefully, instead of just all the students clumping together in one place, we're going to have more clearly defined opportunities, and they will be better spread out, so they're going where they want to be.
Okay. And you just mentioned something, which I know it hasn't been widely discussed yet, but you mentioned down at the elementary school level, starting to share, we already do a career exploration at that level, but there are also, we're also trying to better prepare our students for the choices that become available to them, right? Was that kind of where you were going with that? Because I don't want anyone that may watch this meeting to misunderstand that we are not trying to pigeonhole our students in elementary school for what they're going to choose to do in high school or beyond high school. So I just want to, if you could clarify?
Yeah, absolutely not, because, you know, you don't know what you don't know. And for example, so students might have a passion for something, but until they have a chance to experience that, or, you know, like in robotics, you know, learn to code, is that something I want to do? And they get to do something fun, and they say, hey, I really like this, and then they start to develop those opportunities that no, you know, I like to think of it as a funnel. At the, you know, elementary school level, you're at the top of the funnel, and everything's at your disposal. But I think it's our job as educators, and my job and our department's job is workforce and career development, to help provide those pathway definitions, so when a student gets on that, I mean, I think we've all probably met people that go to college and find out, hey, this is not what I thought it was, and then change majors, which, part of that's growing and learning and exploring, but we also want to do a better job of helping students know beforehand where they're going and why they're going there. And my big thing is being able to answer the question, why? Why am I learning this? And then when you start thinking about career pathways, if you can tie what you're learning to something that you can do, now it has meaning, and it's a reason to learn it.
Okay. And then, just again, for folks who, they're seeing all these businesses and partnerships and synergies, you know, location, 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 why are we putting our centers where we are? If you could just, once again, say, I just don't want people to misunderstand that we're trying to support our students, and when they leave Henrico County Public Schools, they are really ready for, they're life-ready for whatever comes next, and it could be global, that it's not for a specific company located in Henrico County, that that's not our goal, we're just getting students life-ready.
And that's one of the big values of the industry-based certifications. They are nationally-recognized certifications. So if you have your EMT certification, you can go anywhere and use that to get a job. So they're very transportable, and they're also, we like to think of it as a stackable credential. You may start out as an EMT, work there for a while, and then you're going to school at night to get your BSN and moving, you know, so with these stackable credentials, you're opening the pathway. It's in no way limiting to just a job. And that's another, a perfect example is our High Tech Academy. When we first started the High Tech Academy, that was actually designed or to support the chip manufacturing industry. Well, as we all know, that chip manufacturer that was here is no longer here, but the High Tech Academy is still going strong, because the, the career pathway is the industry, industrial engineering applications that the students are learning.
Thank you for providing that. I just wanted folks to understand that we're not training students to go right into certain, certain jobs located here, that they will, you know, with certain companies, that they will be life-ready anywhere they go. Thank you for that. And then just so that, because I'm not sure when, I know all of our graduates will be required to have work-based learning opportunities before they graduate. Do you know when that will start?
The standards of accreditation were changed in 2017 and went into a fact, into effect for the ninth graders in 2018, so that the seniors of the graduating class of 2022 are, we're required to offer them the opportunity for a work-based learning opportunity, which is a very broad definition. It can be anything from apprenticeships to job shadowing. It's multiple opportunities, but it is, once again, to give those students the exposure to a career pathway and let them find out what's really involved with that.
But all students, classes 22 and beyond?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for that. And now I have to pivot. Golly, here we go again. Projections for 2025. If you could go to this slide, there it is. Capacity. Okay. So when I looked at this slide, and I thought, great, we're just skipping right ahead to 2025, and then our building won't be done, our new capacity won't be done until what? What did you say?
Well, 2023 is when the schools will open, the new specialty centers. It would take till 2025 to build out all four years.
Right. So anyway, so that's some time. Here in the Brooklyn District, I've had some capacity struggles, and I really needed to understand the assumptions, because the ones that you used were like, let's take away HVA, let's, let's take away, let's subtract folks, but yet we never added any new folks in. And, and I know, I live in the real world where I'm, I'm looking at growth that's happening in the Fairfield, it's happening in Brooklyn, it's happening in the Three Chop. And guess where it's all going? It's all going to Glen Allen High School. So I want to know what growth was assumed there, because I missed it.
Okay. Well, based on the information that we received is that the growth for schools is expected to remain relatively flat through 2027.
Given that response, I'd like to... Given that response, I'd like to work with the staff this summer and fall to better understand why you're expecting flat growth. I just need to better understand what you are seeing that I'm not, to better understand those assumptions. Because my understanding previously was that the largest group of cohorts will be going into eighth through 11th grade, starting this fall. So then that, as they go through high school, that's the largest groups of students that we have. And again, I'm focusing on Glen Allen High School because that's been an issue, capacity has been an ongoing issue in the Brooklyn District. So I really need to better understand the assumptions being used. And then, let's see, what else did I have? I think that's it for now. But thank y'all very much. I appreciate it.
Mrs. Goncella, I just want to make sure you know, I did take note of your request. And certainly, you know, what the team has done here is only a prediction. And so there are a number of pieces that I would say are based on assumption and including the fact that, you know, students would somehow be evenly distributed across our high schools and going to any of the new specialty centers or taking up the additional approximately 1,000 new seats in ACE. So there's certainly that's going to be, you know, no way to say this is exact, but you can see that even with opening up new seats, and I think what they wanted to show here is we still have some schools that are likely still over functional capacity. So for example, you can see Glen Allen would be in that case. So certainly, we recognize that, you know, one of the questions you've asked and other board members have asked is by adding new seats, does it fix capacity issues? And while it certainly does add capacity across our high schools, you know, depending on how enrollment would play out and any number of factors like HVA that we don't have trend data for, we believe that we'd still have some spots where schools are at or over their functional capacity. And I think you pointed to this also, some that are way under. So this was our first stab at adding seats. You mentioned Henrico High School's, the potential of adding some seats there. So that may help us continue to adjust these projections as we would add even more seats than we've talked about. But certainly, that's exactly what we're trying to do here, is take a look at where we may still have some spots that are tight and what can we continue to do to alleviate that through program needs. But that isn't perhaps the only way to tackle some of these issues.
Thank you, Ms. Goncella. Ms. Shea?
Thank you so much. I have so many things to say about so many parts of this, but I, my colleagues will be pleased that I'm going to try to limit my comments and questions to the things that I think that they are going to touch. So I know Ms. Atkins is going to be all about that Verina Center, so don't take my lack of enthusiasm, Mr. Rhodes, as, or my lack of questions is a lack of enthusiasm, because I saw that environmental physics class, like, I'm pumped about that. So I'm going to try to be a little more directed with my comments and questions. So when we look at the allied health program at Hermitage, I anticipate it's going to have a lot of overlap with also the ACE offerings in that field, as well as some overlap with the Medical Sciences Center at Godwin. And so I think it's going to be really important to articulate what those differences are. And as, you know, that one pager that I've been talking about and you were referring to, to really show the variety of options that are available in each area of interest, I think that's going to be so important, particularly for that one where there's so much close overlap. I think in those articulations, I think, talking about how you can be an eighth grader and get admitted to the ACE Center for your junior and senior year, I think so many people are not aware of that and what a great opportunity that is, being able to publicize that. And then also, you know, let's not miss the fact that attending our zoned high school, your zoned high school also has extraordinary opportunities and extraordinary academic opportunities. And so when a specialty center fits a student's passions and desires, by all means, we want them, you know, attending and applying. But you don't have to go to a specialty center to receive a really amazing caliber education in the Henrico, in Henrico County. And so I don't want us to lose sight of that. But also, as we think of students attending their zoned high schools, expanding access to some of these, excuse me, expanding access to some of these specialty center classes to students who aren't in this specialty program, for example, the new biostatistics class at Godwin, Ms. Donovan, I think, does a really good job in harnessing some of those opportunities and pushing them out to all the students at Godwin, and I know some of our other principals too. So looking at how we can increase access, not only to our specialty centers, but for our students who are at their zoned class, zoned schools, to be able to access some of those classes. I was delighted to hear you mention about expanding some of the existing centers when, I think it was your last sentence on maybe this slide, everywhere except for Deep Run and Glen Allen would have the capacity. I think that is so important to look at. I know the centers in my district have some of the highest application rates, so in some ways, it's a little bit of an outlier, but I think this is true for specialty centers in all of our districts. You know, we have a lot more highly qualified applicants than we do seats for those programs for a lot of them. And so, you know, just looking at some rough numbers from, you know, on average over the years, you know, both of my specialty centers have roughly 350 students that apply for those 50 spots. And talking with the directors of the centers and the principals and just getting a feel, we have a lot of highly qualified students who have the skills and knowledge to be successful in those centers, a lot more than 50, more than 100, right? And so as we look at expanding those seats, I think that is so important so that more students can have access to these programs that not only are they interested in, they have the skills and knowledge to be successful in. But the only way with capacity that that works is if we're expanding countywide and not just picking one or two to expand. Looking at the trends, we know that there's a strong correlation between where students live geographically and the students in the centers they apply to. And so, you know, even if we expanded the center, a significant percentage of that would likely be in the homeschool. So that wouldn't be additional capacity need, but we can't just pick and choose a couple because those schools will end up to have capacity needs. So I am delighted to hear that we are looking at expanding those. I know that will be very beneficial if we follow through with that to the specialty centers in my district. Also delighted to see this capacity projection, obviously, like Ms. Goncella, I want to dig in more, but Freeman High School has been overcapacity and in your projection, it becomes undercapacity, which has possibly some significant positive impacts for constituents in my district that have been concerned about the overcapacity and what that might mean for their redistricting. So, and possible next steps. So I appreciate all that. Here comes my question. As we're looking at specialty centers particularly and how, also how they fit in with their whole school community, has there been a look into how class rank is calculated and how that compares between center and non-center students?
We've not done a study, but we've talked to administrators, teachers, students, most recently, some parents. And I'm not sure what you're asking specifically, but there is a, there is a bit of an advantage in being a part of a center with respect to certain courses that are built in that carry more weight than students who may participate in the normal school setting or the comprehensive setting, sorry.
I appreciate that. You know, this is one of the items that, you know, outside of pandemic things and redistricting, this is, this class rank issue, dealing with specialty center versus the students not in specialty center is one of the things I've gotten the most unsolicited feedback about, from parents, from teachers, from counselors, from administrators. When Ms. Goncella and I were on the lay advisory committee, it came up, what, every meeting?
A lot, yes.
Yeah. It came up a lot and has for years.
Let's see, real quick, the superintendent would like to address your question.
Oh, okay.
I didn't want to cut you off, though. You're welcome to continue. I think, but to your question, you know, it is something that, as Dr. Farrell said, comes up periodically through all of our stakeholder feedback groups, student, parent, and staff, our administrators. And so, you know, I think the term Dr. Farrell used was, you know, there's an advantage, a perceived advantage, depending on what the outcome is you're looking for. So, you know, there are a lot of challenges associated with some of our specialty centers having some weighted courses that wouldn't be available elsewhere and so on. And/or what does that do to class rankings of individuals within the same school? For example, we often have students who will come to us and say, you know, I have a 4.6, I'm not even in the top percentage of my class. So while my GPA matters and I earned that and that counts, if my rank's reported, it might be a disadvantage to me, but here I am with a 4.6. And so they're not wrong. And so this is something that, you know, as we have more access to amazing opportunities for students and they're wonderful opportunities, we want them to continue to have. We've seen school divisions look at any number of ways to continue to offer the rigor, continue to allow students to thrive with access to those kinds of courses and shift to the collegiate way of doing things. So we've examined early on, you know, some ways folks have tackled this and like, for example, the Latin honors system, and there are some other ways to continue to offer these opportunities to students, but to make sure we're taking into account that it isn't always an apples and apples comparison at a school when you're looking at rank specifically. So, and I didn't, again, want to cut you off as you were saying that, but certainly, it's come up with stakeholders. We've done some preliminary work as an administration, but would look to the board if that, the requests or something you would like to direct us to continue to dig deeper on.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And as one of my principals often says, he believes that we can return to better-than-normal post-COVID. And that really requires thinking outside the box about things that we've always done and if they're the best way of doing it. And as we look into a deep dive on student mental health next year and in the coming years, I think it's so important that we break this escalating cycle of students taking six and seven AP classes in order to get these, the GPA bump. I think it's negatively defining some students. It's diluting the rigor of individual AP classes and it's fortifying the silos that our students group in. And so, Dr. Cashwell, I would like to officially request that your team look into the implications of switching to a collegiate or Latin honors system versus a class rank system. And that part of that research and feedback from stakeholders include admission counselors from the top universities in Virginia to give us that feedback. But I believe looking into this is so important. It could ameliorate that either actual or perceived rank discrepancy between specialty center and non-specialty center students. It will, it can empower our students to take electives and fine arts that align with their passion and not just the GPA boost. And it, I believe it can improve the essential quality of community in our schools that benefits all students. And so I appreciate you and your staff being open to looking into that. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea. Ms. Aubrey.
Thank you. I'm so glad you're not excited. I mean, you know, hate to see what it'd be like if she was excited. We'd have to back up. But anyway, I am, the one thing when I look at this, the one thing that makes me sad is the Deep Run yellow line and the Glen Allen yellow line haven't moved down a little bit. And I just hope we can continue to look at how we can leverage our specialty centers to help our population even out a little bit. You know, because we really, when I look at it, we've got to do something. You know, I think we're either going to have to start adding on, we're going to have to, we're going to have to expand, building something in order to make some more room, but we have room. And so I think through our specialty centers, we can even that out, whether we add in another ACA center, I'm just plugging a few things that I think of. What do we do to, and so I challenge y'all to come up with something to move things around. But the thing when I reviewed this, the thing that impresses me the most about this is the use of the location, like you said, location, location, location. And that, to me, is just the spot-on way we do this, with community partners, with working together to make our community and our businesses come together to support our kids in our schools. I mean, they love doing that. And so when we can make this a win-win, our community partners love it, parents love it, kids love it. But when I think about what we're going to be doing with the kids at Verina, I just kind of want to go out there and watch and take a class. I mean, it just, to me, is so exciting. And that location is perfect for this. So it is just such great work on our staff to put all of this together. I couldn't be happier about that and give you kudos where they are certainly do. Because, you know, one of the things we talk about is having them career-ready. And when I looked at that list of the things that our kids can do after this, that is just opening up so many doors that, for both centers, that is just, it is amazing. One feedback I get from parents most often who, of the kids who take CTE classes, you know, not everybody wants to go to college necessarily. Not everybody had, they want to get to work. And so having kids come out of our CTE centers with those certifications already, my own nephew has taken classes as an adult through our programs. And just knowing what we're making available to our kids to be career-ready, but also the feedback I get is they take classes in high school that let them know, did I want to do this? Maybe I did, maybe I didn't. And I've had a couple of parents over the years say, thank you for saving me from a switcher. You know, because a lot of times, kids will take two years of classes in college and then they switch majors and that adds another year of college. And so this lets them explore their passions and find out what they're interested in. So to me, we are doing our kids such a service by doing that. And also, in the end, we're helping them find their way. So it's just kudos all the way around. It's awesome stuff. So Ms. Atkins, I will turn it over to you.
Well, I am so ready.
Yeah, go right ahead. No, she's going to jump through. Yes, you bet. Go right through.
Let me just be clear. Listen, this is amazing. This is phenomenal. It deserves a round of applause and a standing ovation because what we're doing, I'm excited about both centers. Let me just be clear. I'm excited about both centers, but I am on a natural high when we're talking about the center at Verina because location, location, location is key. And, you know, I'm going to stick to my notes here so that I won't hold us, but for so long, I just think that there's so many archaeological potential opportunities that's going to transform Henrico County. And I see it, I see the vision of it, the opportunity to look at that dump that's down the road and research that and look at all the beauty that surrounds it, whether you're talking about agricultural runoff, whether you're talking about the trees that have been in the community since John Roth came there. There's going to be so many things to explore and there are going to be careers that do not exist today, that these kids are going to be prepared for tomorrow. And that's what we want. We want to be able to prepare students for the careers that exist that we see and we feel and we touch and the careers that we don't know the titles to. But from an educational perspective, they'll have the capacity, the aptitude, and the attitude to pursue them. And I just want to thank you because you're making that possible, you and your teams. This is something that was a vision that you're bringing to fruition. I don't know any other facility except for the ones that we visited in Virginia Beach, so we have the opportunity to do it better. I'm going to say that publicly. We have the opportunity to do it better because we can. So I'm going to get that out. I needed to get all that energy out, so everyone watching, I just want you to know, it's been in me for about a month. about a month now and it just feels good to be able to release it. Now I'll go to some of my questions. The first question I have is what's being done to better understand how to promote and market? This is new, so it's going to, it feels like it's going to need a new approach. I'm not sure if what we've done traditionally in marketing our centers will be as healthy for something like this. Some of the terms that we even used on the screen in some communities will just go just like that. So I'm wondering what, what are we going to do to be able to market in a way that's attractive for families and students?
Right. So once we're able to identify a center director, we'll begin a process of a full, full-on promotional blitz, social media, videos, you know, being out in the community, inviting folks to the school, maybe having some different events at some of these different out, outside locations just to really engage folks and what the learning is going to look like. And just, you know, course our website, just really blow it up as much as possible in a way that we've never done it before. Because to your point, you know, we, we said the same thing because we worked on it. Credit to Dan Stukes and Eric Rhodes behind us. But we have a, a better understanding of what this all entails. But it is going to be important that we really educate our community about this in a way that we haven't done it before. Because I think about some of the capacity issues and I believe that if we do this right, which we will and will be the best, Ms. Atkins.
Yes, we will.
Yes, we will. We'll pull students from all across the county. Further west in school, we're going to get them out to Verona because this is so special and we're going to promote it in that way. So full media blitz, once we're able to, you know, move forward and start to promote the center.
One thought I had was I wonder if it would make sense to pull some students together and learn the terminology that they use for the same exact thing and some of the words on the screen. As I looked at the careers, other words that students use to describe that, it might be wise to learn what that lingo is and tie it to the specific verbiage that we plan to market with. So that when they start to see some of the marketing and promotion, they're going to tie it to the lingo that they would use in their communities. I said agricultural runoff. I've been using some of these words with students. And a student was like, you're just talking about the garbage. I was like, I'm not talking about garbage. I'm talking about agricultural runoff. He said, yeah, that's the garbage. That's what we call it when we walk up and down Deep Bottom. Things like that are important when you're marketing. It's not meant to mean trash. It's meant for pollution. So my point is if we grab some students and understand the language that they're using to describe what we're talking about using different words, it may be a great connection point specifically with families as well. So that's just a thought to explore. The other piece is around the communication center at Verona. I know enrollment is declining, so I want to learn more about what efforts are happening around the refresh. I know we're refreshing some of the equipment. So can you share more on what that effort looks like? And before you respond to that, something that students are sharing is around gaming and wanting to know, can gaming be included in the communication center? Because that's one way that they communicate with the headsets. They're having full-blown conversations about, it's really coding. Do, let me just acknowledge that. But I'm wondering if gaming fits into that, that space or not and has that been explored?
We haven't really looked at gaming, but I will tell you some examples of some of the things we're, we're trying to do. For instance, last Saturday, a group of Verona students were actually at the Woodland Cemetery. They had an event at Woodland Cemetery and they're starting to document the history as well as the future of that. So in the past, where it focused in more on the literature aspect of communications, what we're trying to do is the literature aspect still needs to be there, but how do you take that and bring it into the 21st century through, you know, the digital marketing, digital media opportunities that are out there? And when we met with the, the group, what was it, two or three weeks ago, we actually had people, because the other thing about the communication center, we've dealt with the communication center and we think of it as that community. But communications in today's world is everywhere, all the time, anytime.
Yes.
And so that's why bringing, you know, California to us and taking us to California through that media opportunity and exposure, we're opening the doors. And so when I say that, we're, we're not throwing away what we've started, but how do you expand on those goals and get into the things that, as you said, the careers that are out there now in the marketing, it's basically a communication career in marketing. And, you know, gaming, like you say, is a piece of that, but once again, it's the coding behind the gaming. And the marketing of a website is the coding of building a website. So it's creating the multiple pathways within the center. So a student may come in and be very astute in writing literature pieces that could be in a magazine, but someone else has got to be the person that codes it and markets that so someone will read that piece of information. So we, by opening the doors to different pathways, we're going to bring students in, hopefully that will be excited about the other opportunities in the communication fields.
I'm taking it.
And if I could just add, Ms. Atkins, we've begun a process of connecting with folks in the industry to identify those really attractive pathways that perhaps we don't offer currently at Verona High School.
Yeah, it's interesting. I've, I actually had a couple of conversations and I'll continue those conversations with a few news reporters because I wanted to better understand from them, from them as a reporter, understanding how their career is changing, where in the past they had to have the script, well, now it's a phone. Or sometimes it's nobody, but when you get into the room, it's all imagery. And so I'm delighted to hear that we are talking with others that are in the industry and learning from them, how are they keeping their skills fresh so that we can take that information and bring it back into the curriculum, into future careers? The other piece, can you share with me what we're doing with the equipment? You know, what does that look like as far as refreshing?
Well, and we are, that's going to be part of the budget process as we move forward. But part of that is to make sure that the, the equipment, while it drives the center, if the focus of the center is changing, what's going to be the right equipment to budget And that's where we have to rely on our business partners to, to give us the, as we said, you know, help us see the future and where we need to go.
So I'm going to pause and I'll just process what you said and I'll come back, not in a public forum, but I'll come back and share with both of you my thoughts on the equipment. But Dr. Cashwell?
Yeah, I was just going to make sure you knew we had noted that and, and look forward to following up on it. I think as both have shared there in the beginning of stages of talking about resurfacing, I think was the term you used, the road term to go with their theme, but the refresh. Looking at all of our specialty centers, but particularly the communication center, there's some really exciting work happening as they've engaged some industry experts. I think they mentioned California, but I mean, some leading experts in the field to really think about how to enhance that center, resurface it. And I think once we've nailed some of those pieces down, then the equipment needs would become more evident. So I think they didn't want to put the cart before the horse, but we do anticipate, you know, whether it's upgrading what's there or making a shift to adjust and bring in something that may not currently be there to meet the direction they're headed. But we were excited to, to update you as we make some progress on the, the specialty center resurfacing work.
And then my last question, and I think you may have shared the response to it already, but, you know, we're at 6 o'clock and my brain may not be able to recall it, is around transportation. I know one of the things when I think about students, for example, you know, you can live in Verona or Holland Springs and be in ACA and still takes you maybe 45 minutes to get to the school that you can drive to in 10. So is transportation a part of the conversation as we talk about expansion?
Yes, yes. It's, it's one of those pieces that we sort of talk about in the background and looking at how we can expand these opportunities to students and also make it more efficient for them to be able to get to these different locations.
Fantastic. And will you guys be sharing more about that in upcoming months about what transportation looks like? I know that, that it's difficult because we do not manage it per se, but I think that we certainly want to talk about the hub situation. That, that is just, improvement is necessary, required. I think if I, if I went back and looked at emails around something that families want improved, it is the hub situation, making sure it's adequately staffed, making sure that there are safe spaces at the hubs. And then in speaking with bus drivers as well, making sure that there's staff to watch the students. So I'm looking forward to more information around as we expand and increase numbers, making sure that we're taking care of that transportation piece too. So thank you for that.
And I will say, we're very excited to work with Mr. Ellis and Mr. Roy. Mr. Ellis has brought a, a new way of looking at solving some of the problems. And so he is very creative and, and the other piece, they, you know, that we will continue, one of those speed bumps that they have to deal with is recruiting bus drivers, which I look at CTE as a way to help solve that as well, which is something else we're working on in the background. So as we can work with, you know, he has a vision to help solve those problems as well.
Let me cut my mic back on. Thank you, thank you, thank you for that and I look forward for more.
Ms. Gonsella.
Yes, I'd just like to circle back to what Ms. Shea said about class rank. And just to highlight, I know she focused on, on a different side of it. I don't believe she mentioned how concerned we all are about mental health in general, especially when we come back in the fall. But I think mental health and class rank and the stress and the anxiety our students suffer needs to be a part of the conversation as well. And if we head in this direction, which I think we're going to, but I think Reverend Cooper will probably ask the board, right? Won't you ask if, if we're all in agreement? Okay. Anyway, and if we do head in this direction, we all know how important feedback is from our community stakeholders, that it's important we give the students and families ample opportunity to give us feedback. If we are going, and should, wherever the conversation goes, if we choose to phase out class rank, students and families need plenty of time to, to adjust to it as we phase it out. I mean, I just wanted to be clear, there would be a phase out if any decision was made, correct, Dr. Cashwell?
Well, certainly what I'm hearing, we certainly heard from one board member already, but if it's the will of the board that, you know, you're directing staff to take a look at this, we would certainly bring back a plan that would look at stakeholder feedback. Certainly a lengthy process. We'd want to do it right to provide you the information and a path forward that's reflective of, again, stakeholder feedback and takes into consideration and implementation that honors students who are currently, you know, in programs in high school and has sort of a phased-in look. And, and we would also, of course, research how, how others have handled this. But absolutely, if, if that's the will of the board, we certainly look forward to doing that.
Yep, you're good. So thank you so much, Mrs. Gonsella. Quick question, Dr. Farrell, as it relates to preparing our students at the middle school level, could you speak again to the intentional efforts that will be taken to increase enrollment of the historically marginalized students in gifted advanced courses and academically-oriented enrichment programs, specifically with early identification, providing the necessary supports, improving the application process guidelines to expand access as well as awareness improvement about the opportunities early on to our families about specific programming?
Right. So I think Mr. Baten spoke about this earlier in terms of starting in elementary school. And that education is really more about educating the families, the, the parents of those students about what the, the journey looks like, K through 12 in Henrico County Public Schools. So getting information to people in a more timely fashion so they're able to start to plan their, their students' personal journey through Henrico County Public Schools. I think in, in some respects, just being completely honest, you know, some communication, you know, may be a little, little spotty, but in working together, Mr. Baten and I, and also with the principals at the, the other levels, middle school and high school, and also school counseling, that's something that we, we have a plan to strengthen to ensure that, you know, all families have access to the same information. And of course, we will rely on our school counselors to, to work with students and families to help them plan their pathways through elementary, middle, and high school so that they are prepared to pursue these advanced course opportunities.
Well, I appreciate that because again, we want to be as pro, we want to be as proactive and not as reactive to it. And it just, again, being consistent with our equity and our equality in regards to opportunities for our families. I'm, you know, one of the problems going last is that they say a lot of what you want to say. So my peers have covered so much ground and, but I do share their enthusiasm, specifically about entirety of the presentation, not just one particular portion, but I'm just enthusiastically, excitedly waiting to see the next steps. And I know that our division is going to be better forward. So thank you both again and to your team and to your staff for your presentation.
Thank you.
Dr. Cashwell?
I echo the thanks. The journey continues. We're so glad they picked that theme. I can almost hear some Journey music in the background and everything. The wheels are turning and all of that. All right, thank you very much. I know we had some folks in the background there too, and I want to echo my thanks to everyone and, and many who are not represented here in this room and at the podium, who have had a hand in this high school redesign work, including our high school administrators and many of their teams.